Welcome, everybody, to today's work session. I'm going to turn it right over to Dr. Evans Brown.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Rivera.
Anytime.
All right, so good evening. Today is...
You might want to wait one second. Admir, are we ready?
I'm ready about that.
Okay. We're good to go. Welcome, everybody, to the December 14th work session. We will be discussing our student achievement and our educational support committees. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Vice President for Student Achievement, Dr. Kathy Evans Brown. Dr. Evans Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Okay, good evening, everyone. This is our student achievement work session. I believe this is the last one for the year. And today, we are going to provide data as we've been trying to do every student achievement session. So, as you know, New York State has begun to revamp the credentials for high school graduation. It's a daunting task. And Buffalo is on the move because we do have schools who provide college-level courses. And since I've been on this board since 2019, we've had an increase of 450 students who are now doing AP courses. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Tanya Williams.
All right, thank you so much, Chairwoman. Dr. Evans Brown, and greetings to all of our board members and especially to our incoming new board members. I want to officially also greet you and all of our colleagues who may be on, as well as community members. I'm really looking forward to Chief Botticelli's presentation tonight, which is going to be dealing with our dual-credit enrollment courses. And I don't want to steal her thunder, but I think you will be pleasantly surprised that, under her leadership, how much this program has grown. So with that being said, I don't want to spend any more time, you know, just giving an introductory message. I'm going to turn things over to Chief of Academic Affairs, our Chief Academic Officer, Anne Botticelli.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm really excited to talk about our dual-enrollment program. So, Admir, if you can pull up my slides, that would be perfect. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, everything we do is alignment with the strategic plan for the district. And tonight, I'm going to be talking about the dual-enrollment program, which aligns to our first two strategic goals. So eliminating our achievement and opportunity gap, as well as accessing educational excellence and accelerated learning. So tonight, everything will connect back to these two goals. And I think you'll see that we are making some excellent progress. Next slide, please. So what is dual-credit? Dual-credit courses are offered at our BPS high schools. They are taught by our BPS teachers, who have been approved by the college that's offering the course in conjunction with BPS. They are aligned to particular college courses with college-approved syllabi and rigorous content. And they are monitored for academic rigor. So what does that look like? So in most cases, they are actually taught at the high school itself. Certain exceptions would include a lot of the middle-early college programs because those students may be traveling directly to either ECC or Buff State for the courses, which are, in that case, taught by the actual college professor. But for most of the courses we're going to talk about tonight, they are actually taught by our own teachers, who've gone through a rigorous vetting process with the partnering institution. So in many cases, our teachers are asked, if they're going to teach a course, to submit their resume. They're actually applying to do this work. They may be asked to submit a transcript. They may need to provide proof that they've worked with this content in the past. But the colleges are, they have certain expectations for anyone who's going to be offering a dual-credit course. So they're very careful in the selection of the staff that will offer these classes. So once they've been approved, teachers will make sure that their course is aligned to the rigor of the college course itself. Many of the professors actually work with our teachers and make sure that the instruction is aligned. They may help review the curriculum and lessons that the teachers are delivering. And then they'll come out and monitor. So the institution that's offering this college-aligned course will actually come out and visit the classes just to make sure that the instruction is on par with what a college-level course would look like at the actual university. Next slide, please. So if a student successfully completes a dual-credit course, they not only receive a credit toward their high school graduation, but they also receive college credits, which is why this is so impactful. Currently, these courses are free to our students. So they're walking away not only with credit toward their high school graduation, but with free college credits. And in almost every circumstance, these college credits will transfer to any institution. So while they may have earned it from a particular school, it is likely that it will transfer to whatever school they attend. It is the student's responsibility, though, to verify with the institution that they go to in the future what the policy of that particular school is. So, for example, if they're taking a course through ECC, those will automatically transfer to our SUNY schools. But if they're going to a private institution, they do need to check with the private institution what that school's policies are, whether the transfer will be accepted. In some cases, it may be accepted as an elective. In some cases, it may be accepted as part of the student's major. It's going to depend on the course itself and the receiving institution. But if you think about it, we're giving our kids an opportunity to start college while they're still in high school. So it's a really wonderful opportunity for these students. On top of which, they're actually being exposed to rigorous coursework that is similar to what they'll get when they do go to an institute of higher learning. So they're being prepared early to see what it will be like when they're in college. And there's another perk. ECC actually lets the kids have passes. And they can use the downtown gym, they can use the downtown library. So I think that that's an extra incentive for a lot of our students who might be working with ECC. Next slide, please. ... to 11th and 12th graders, with a couple of exceptions. Some of the CTE courses might start a little earlier. And if you're a student in 10th grade enrolled in AP Language and Composition, that can also count toward your dual credits. So currently, BPS partners with Alfred College, Arizona State College, Buffalo State College, Erie Community College, Hilbert College, and Niagara University, with a couple other institutions in the pipeline that I'll mention later. Next slide, please. So we have staff that are dedicated to supporting this initiative. So I've talked before about our Advanced Placement Initiative, AP. So we set a target that there would be a minimum of five AP or dual-credit courses at schools. And we're pretty much near the mark. So we have some dedicated staff that will support this work to ensure that kids are registered appropriately, that they understand what they're taking, what they're doing, and that everything's aligned. So our Director of Libraries and Curriculum Initiatives, Mike Cambria, leads this charge. And with him is Project Administrator Stephanie Finn, Coordinator Elizabeth Daly, and Instructional Technology Coach Joe Melfizzi. And they actually go out and help register the students to avoid any confusion. Because in most cases, this is going to be the first time students are actually working with college, you know, a college and learning about what it's like to enroll in a school. So they're not, I'm going to take that back. They're not enrolling in the school, but they are taking the course. So there's some paperwork associated with that. So Stephanie will go out, she'll meet with the teachers, she'll make sure that they have all their questions answered. She'll help the students get online and fill out the paperwork. Sometimes there's an FAQ from the university, just with typical questions that they might receive. But this is an excellent opportunity, and this staff will support them in any way that's needed. So again, they work with credit recovery and AP as well. So they're used to going out and working with teachers and making sure they understand the technology that's needed, what the paperwork is like, answering any questions they have, facilitating anything that might need to happen between the university and BPS. So Stephanie, in that instance, is our liaison for higher ed. So she'll meet with the universities, making sure that all the paperwork is complete and that everything is all set to move forward. Next slide, please. So here are the courses that we are currently offering through Alfred State College. So you can see, these are centered at Burgard and McKinley, and they're part of the CTE program. So students in these programs have the opportunity to learn, to earn multiple credits toward college. So we have machining, auto, carpentry, electrical, HVAC, plumbing, and welding. And you can see, the kids could walk away with quite a bit of college credit. Next slide, please. So MST actually, through the National Equity Lab, which was part of their school redesign, partnered with Arizona State College, and they offer an urban poetry course. Through SUNY Buffalo State, many of our students are part of the Urban Teachers Academy. So that started initially at McKinley. And those students are advanced enough that they can now take a course taught by a college professor on the college campus. And we've started the same program at IPREP. So as the students move up through the years at IPREP, they will eventually hit the college-level course as well. So we'll have the UTA program cemented at two different schools, helping to build our teacher pipeline for the district. And I'm going to mention Middle-Early College a couple times tonight. Their whole program is centered around students walking away with college credit. So their courses are, they have some dual-credit offerings through the district. But they also have many courses that their students take on the college campuses, either ECC or Buffalo State, taught by the actual college professors. So for Middle-Early College, there's some on campus. And then there's some that our teachers offer as well. Next slide, please. So our partnership with SUNY Erie is relatively new. We had already had some CTE courses through Erie. But in the past couple of years, we've begun to partner and add additional courses outside of Career and Tech. So, for example, Advanced Painting and Drawing is offered at IPREP. The African-American Literature course, we offered for the first time last year. And we can see we have it at a number of schools. College Composition is through CTE at South Park and Hutch Tech. College of Mathematics is new this year at a number of our schools. We have Computer Tech and Electromechanical through CTE. And Electromechanical is actually taught by college professors on the campus. Next slide, please. Admir, next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, you did it, my fault. So Exploring World Music, we're offering it at a number of schools this year. Mechatronics is actually taught by college professors at the Northland Facility. Public Speaking is new this year. Survey of American Popular Music. Web Design Principles is part of the program with Hutch Tech. And again, Middle-Early College also partners with Erie, as well as Buffalo State. And students can go to the campus to work with the college professors. Next slide, please. So last year was our first year partnering with Hilbert. And so this is a unique program. Hilbert actually gives students course credit for successful completion of certain AP courses. So students are enrolled in the AP course, and they take the AP exam. But if they're successful in the course itself, Hilbert will grant them college credit. So it's a guaranteed credit for college, as opposed to just taking the AP, because not every school is going to accept certain scores on the AP exams. So this is a bonus for our students. So we're very pleased with our partnership with Hilbert. And this year, we added Anatomy and Physiology, which is not an AP course. But our curriculum has been aligned to the college-level curriculum. So the syllabes are aligned. And so we are also able to offer that as college credit through Hilbert. Next slide, please. And then there's a partnership through Niagara University with IPREP. So there's a number of courses that IPREP also offers that are worth college credit. That would be Anatomy, Physiology, Economics, Participation in Government, and Introductory Statistics. And now, we are currently in conversation with Villa Marina College to offer additional courses next year. So next year, if I bring this presentation back, you're going to see that we have some other courses through Villa. And we've recently started a conversation with Bryant and Stratton. So we're looking forward to seeing where that goes as well. So in general, there are a lot of benefits to our students for this participation. And we continue to grow these programs. So every year, we're trying to add new courses. We've been very successful working with these universities. They are wonderful partners. And again, our students walk away with free college credits. So we know they're being exposed to rigorous coursework. They're learning what college would be like if they were to enroll the following years. So they're getting that rigorous exposure. They're getting the credits themselves. Their confidence is growing. And I have to admit, I think our teachers are very satisfied. It's an exciting opportunity to teach at the college level, but work with your own students. So everything about the program has been wonderful so far. And we continue to grow it in tandem with our Advanced Placement Program. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Anne, for another robust presentation. I wish that Anatomy and Physiology was offered when I was at Lafayette High School. I had to wait to take it in college. I was a pharmacy major, actually.
Okay.
So, thank you again. I'm going to go around, I don't have an alphabetical list, but I'm going to call on Boardroom as I see you. And I see Jen first. Jen, you have any questions or comments for Anne?
I do not have any questions. I think it was a very thorough presentation, so thank you very much. I know a lot went into that. And I wasn't aware of IPREP also being a teacher academy, you know, pipeline. And we're looking to do that, so I'm very excited that that's going to be in the district I represent. But it's beneficial, again, as a mom with two graduates from Middle-Early College, just to have that in their pocket is so, it's a confidence booster, it's a morale booster. And it just prepares them for the next step. So I appreciate your presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Board Member Terrence Herr, any comments or questions?
Evans Brown, I appreciate this presentation. I'm so happy to hear the good works that our district is doing and partner with colleges in our area. And Arizona State, which is halfway across the country. So we reaching out and doing more things for our kids. And I have been working over the past couple of years with Hilbert College, Dr. Michael Brophy, and Villa College, Dr. Giadano, about these programs. And I'm so happy to see that they're flourishing and, you know, and being utilized now and coming to our district. Because I feel that all our kids deserve this opportunity. And when we talk about equity, you know, we talk about all of our children. And just quickly, some of our parents, you know, they reached out and they said, you know, "I didn't know my kids were taking college courses. When did this start?" So that's something that Dr. Tanya Williams, you know, and Dr. Michael Brophy, you know, we sat down and talked about it. And just these, our children and parents, you know, just to connect with the district and find out what their children are doing, their ability to learn these college courses at such a young age is amazing. And, you know, and I expect a lot more of our students because, you know, they're brilliant here in our district. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Herr. Chairwoman, Board Member Paulette Wood?
I just, I have a couple of questions. When our teachers are teaching these courses, are they getting paid at a college? If they're teaching college-level courses approved by the college? Are they receiving any renumeration? Or do they get any additional pay for, from Buffalo Public Schools? I mean, what, I'm really happy that they're taking on the task. I'd love for our children to get extra college credit, but I'm just wondering, do the teachers get paid?
So I don't believe so, but I'll verify for you. I don't believe it's compensated. I know that we don't provide extra compensation.
So the teachers, so the teachers are just taking this on in addition to the regular classwork and regular load?
No. So it is one of their classes. So if they teach five classes, this would be one of their classes. And there is no compensation.
Okay. And my other question is, I know in City Honors, we pay the fee for students to get AP credit. Is that consistent across all schools?
So we don't pay for them to get AP credit. We pay for them to take the exam. So they may or may not get credit, depending on how they score on the exam and depending what school they go to. So a school could say, "We don't accept AP," or "You must, we will only take a five." So depending on what the student earned on the exam, they may or may not get credited at the institute they attend. But we do pay the exam fee at every school for every AP course.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was equitable and across the board.
Yep, so every student who takes AP, we did not want to have a barrier in their way, so we take care of the fee.
Okay, those were my two questions. And great, wonderful. I'm glad we're expanding and exposing our children to the rigors of being prepared for college.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paulette. So Anne, I have a question. How is this initiative introduced to students in the district?
So through CTE, it's part of the curricula that they establish for the programs. So the CTE department would be talking to students about the coursework that's required for certain pathways. For some of the newer programs we've offered, we've sent communications home to families and met with students to explain to them what was going on. So there might be some, sometimes there's confusion. They think they're actually enrolling to become a student at that school. And a family will say, "Well, I might not be going there next year." But really, what they're doing is registering for this particular course. And the credit that they earn can transfer to whatever institution they do attend in the future. But if they stay at that school, then it's automatically right there on their transcript.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so Stephanie Finn, right now, is in the process of registering students with the universities. So she's going out right now and registering. So a student starts the class as a high school student. And then they choose whether or not they want to register with the institution. So you could just take some of these courses and just earn the high school credit. If you choose to enroll, excuse me, to take this course as a college course, you stay in the same course, but you would also have this on your future transcript for that particular school. So they'd give you a transcript from ECC or from Hilbert to say that you took this course. So there is communication as we register the students, putting, getting them in the course, because there's certain information that the family needs to provide in order to register the student.
Right, so if it's, well, that's probably something that could be answered at all the time. So if the child does not pass, for example, does that go against them? Or do they get the high school credit?
They would, well, if they don't pass, they wouldn't get the high school credit either. So you have to pass the course to get high school credit, as well as to get college credit. The AP is a little different. So you might not get a high score on the AP exam, but if you pass your coursework, if you're enrolled in the Hilbert class, you could potentially still get Hilbert credits that would transfer. So they're rewarding you for doing well within the actual course itself because they know how rigorous our AP courses are. They've aligned them to their own courses. They've looked at our syllabi. They've looked at the teachers' resumes and transcripts. So they recognize that the exposure to that rigorous course is extremely impactful. And so a student can still earn the credit even if the AP exam score is not, you know, particularly high.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Anne Rivera, questions, comments?
I do, I have one comment and one question. So the first comment is that it is good to see this expand, particularly with dual enrollment, because when students take a dual-enrollment class and they pass, as Ms. Botticelli just told us, it's on their transcript. They will earn credit for it. And it's an easier transfer with the AP exam. It's more complicated, some schools take it, some don't. And it's, it really does have a strong impact on students' time to graduate because they're already having college courses, entry-level ones, on their transcripts. And they can transfer them to the institution that they choose to attend. My question, since that's such a big thing, and it may be that not everybody understands it because, you know, a lot of, some people have never done this. It's a relatively new thing. AP would be more, AB and IB are more known. I know that students are notified. You just answered that question about how students and parents are notified. I'd like to know if there are any future-looking plans to make this a part of high school showcases so middle-school students know which schools that they might have this opportunity with or where and how that might be an opportunity for them? And are there ways in which that we're working with families so they understand what the potential impact of their time-toon degree once they get to college and they start taking college courses?
So good questions. So when we talk to the students and the families, we do have to make it clear. So it's, I hope someone corrects me if I'm wrong, but I believe they get a separate transcript from that actual institution. So it's not necessarily on their college transcript. It's an additional transcript they have.
It is.
And again, those can transfer anywhere.
Yeah.
Those can transfer to other institutions. So it's really, we can bring it to the college showcase. It changes year to year. So it's not a definite that each school will continually offer the same courses because it is dependent on student requests and things like that. The CTE ones are constant. So those programs will remain at the same school, and they will forever be there. So those, I believe they do discuss at high school enrollment activities, but I can verify that with Mr. Harris. The other courses, right now, are listed in the course catalog. So any parent could go in and see where they are currently offered for the dual enrollment program. But I think it's a great idea. I'm sure schools would want to actively recruit eighth graders by explaining, like, "These are the types of things that you can get at our, at our school."
Okay, that sounds good. And then I just have one last follow-up question, based on what you were just saying. So if the offerings shift from school to school periodically, are there plans to expand this to ensure that we have equity and access for our students? That most students would be able to access the opportunity if they qualify in terms of grades?
So some of it is dependent on the institution that we're partnering with. So because they manage and monitor the courses, sometimes they don't want to expand too broadly because they need, they know their own professor's time and how much they can devote to working with our teachers. So, for example, ECC tells us, you know, "We can take this many schools this year," et cetera. Hilbert, because it's the AP, had a little more flexibility because we offer AP so widely. So it does vary institute to institute. But they have continually come back to us with new opportunities. So it's really been wonderful.
And I see, yeah. Yeah, you're adding institutions, too. So there are plans to continue to move forward with that, with multiple institutions in order to ensure that we have more students to access. Are there ways in which that students in high schools that may not offer dual enrollment could access it if they want it at another school?
There is always the potential, if the schools' time periods align, that they could do something virtually. That's how we do some of our AP coursework. But not every school has the same schedule. So it doesn't always work out the way you might want it to because they're off by 15 minutes or something like that for periods. But when courses align, that's something we could look at for dual. We've done it for AP in the past.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Board Member Mary Scott, questions, comments?
Thank you, Dr. Evans Brown. Just one comment and one question. And thank you, Mrs. Botticelli, for the presentation. There was a really great piece on our CTE programs in the Buffalo News, really highlighting Bennett, McKinley, and South Park. And I think this presentation tonight complements that very well. I've always felt, working in a suburban district, having my kids attend Buffalo Public Schools, that the high school, the innovative high school programs that we have are above and beyond what any other district offers. My question for you, Ms. Botticelli... My question for you, Ms. Botticelli is, do, do you, from your knowledge, do suburban districts offer such opportunity to have access to a variety of college courses that we offer and for them to earn such credit that we are currently offering?
I don't know about every suburban district. I know many of them do partner and offer, um, at least some dual credit opportunities. But I don't know how vast the offerings are.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Scott. Uh, Board Member Sharon Belton-Copman, you're up. Questions, comments?
I just want to thank you for the presentation. Uh, and hopefully I would like to see, uh, moving forward, some actual data. Um, how successful the program is as far as how many students are taking it, how many success stories we have. Uh, welcome to our new board, uh, future board members that are on the, uh, in our meeting today. Uh, and that's really, uh, in trying to move forward for next year, I hope, uh, that we will be more data driven. So, um, I'm pleased to see that, uh, we've grown. And I want to, I want to be clear about this. This, this board or this district did not need outside people probing them. This was moving prior to them. Uh, uh, getting on their soapboxes and, uh, uh, selling this. We were doing this. And so, you know, I like to give credit when credit is due. Um, uh, we saw the need and we moved forward. Oftentimes, people piggyback off of what we're doing versus giving us the credit. And, um, kudos to our staff members who were working on this, um, uh, uh, at a steady pace to accomplish what they've done. And thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. And I can come back with data. Right now they're still registering, so I don't have enrollment numbers yet for the courses. Um, but later in the year, we would know. And by the summer, we would also know how many students earned a credit.
Well, we had from last year, right? We had students that took it, but we didn't have as much enrollment. Is that it?
Our enrollment was lower last year because we've added courses since then, but we can get you the figures from last year.
Yeah. Yeah. I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, that our teachers understand that the board is looking at this. Our principals understand and our students understand. And we just want to maximize any monies that we're spending. So, uh, if we're going to, uh, move this district, it has to be data driven. So thank you so much. I appreciate the work you're doing.
Absolutely.
All right. And thank you for that. All your questions, board members. Uh, Terrence Hurd, I see your hand is up.
Oh, thank, thank you, Chairwoman. Uh, my only question is, um, what's the opportunities that we can move this to our vocational programs? Uh, a lot of our children don't go to college, you know, when they graduate and, um, you know, they take vocational trade skills. And, um, some things, some, some take courses while in high school and some wish they have taken courses. So what's the opportunity that we can reach out to our children with a vocational program to bring them into, um, you know, um, different, with vocational.
We have a number of, uh, our CTE programs that already offer the, the coursework. So, um, I, I don't have the slides pulled up at the moment, but, um, many of the courses I listed are for college credit and they're through CTE. So they would be students in, for example, welding or electromechanical, et cetera. So they are in a, a career and trades pathway, but they're earning college credits also. They may not decide to go to college later, but they have those credits.
Okay. Uh, that's, that's what I was concerned about. Just making sure we can reach out to everyone. And I know you mentioned CTE for, now for state. And I, I'm not quite sure how they play the role with the Northland workforce corridor or, um, or how we, um, moving in that direction also.
We have one course that currently is taught at Northland by the professor. Uh, I often, I think it was electromechanical. I'd have to go back and look. Um, but that's the only dual credit course we currently have at Northland.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Botticelli.
Thank you.
Our professors are at, at Northland, so it's kind of parallel to what they're doing as well. And, you know, with this vigorous mandated curriculum, you know, it don't necessarily, um, always affect our children in terms of student achievement. Sometimes I think, you know, young people, you know, get overwhelmed when they get into these classes, they, you know, thinking that they can't pass, you know, them. I remember I had a niece that touched tech last year and she was really struggling, you know, with one of these classes. And she said, why did I wait till my senior year to take this class? You know, she got through it, you know, she's getting the guy. But we have to be real careful and make sure that we put, you know, some guardrails and safeguards, you know, for these young people who are taking, you know, a higher, uh, level of, um, you know, courses.
Mm-hmm. So one of, one of the nice things I was going to say is that you could take this course and not register with the college. So you'd still be taking the rigorous course, but for high school credit only. So that could take pressure off if someone is feeling, um, very anxious about the particular course. So they still get the exposure, but they wouldn't have to register.
And they know that, right?
Yes. We're very clear with the students. If, if they seem to be, um, having a little difficulty in the course, they have that option of not enrolling in the college level class. But they still stay in the course itself.
Perfect. Okay. So I think I got all the, um, existing, uh, folks. I don't see any other hands or board members, I should say. Um, Dr. Williams, did you have any closing remarks?
Once again, I think, you know, a fantastic job by our chief academic officer. Um, I think this initiative is certainly a win-win. You know, it is a win for our students. It's a win for our teachers who I hear are excited about this opportunity to teach these rigorous classes. I think, you know, it, um, addresses the narrative that Buffalo Public School students are graduating somehow or another, um, further behind than their peers. At whether it's charters or, um, some of our sister and brother suburban school districts, that narrative is not true. Our students are meeting their region's requirements, their high school graduation requirements. And now, you know, we're hearing about them also, um, meeting some entry level college course requirements. I think our employers, you know, in the community need to know that our children are participating in these dual enrollment opportunities. And I just think this is another example of us moving things to the next level. We've got a long ways to go, but we've also come a long ways. So great job.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Cause we didn't know the complexity of what this, what this looked like, Anne. So yeah, thank you. This is, I think this is the first time I've heard this presentation. So kudos to you and your staff. Um, with, if no other questions, um, this will close out our student achievement, uh, work session. And we managed to do that in, uh, 45 minutes. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Scott.
Pressure's on, huh?
Yes.
For us to stay on task for this next committee meeting. Dr. Anne Rivera, are we good to transition to the educational support committee?
We certainly are. And I'm looking forward to the presentation. First, I want to say thank you to Ms. Botticelli, to Dr. Williams, and of course to Dr. Evans Brown for such an enlightening presentation.
All right. Tonight in educational support, we are going to get an update on central registration. Many know that this has been a big priority of mine. Um, and I learned even before I was a board member that our central registration, registration system is intricate. Um, lots of moving parts with our school choice model, um, serving over 30,000 students. It is far more than the simplistic process that our suburban districts have to go through with essentially them just following a very, um, standardized neighborhood school model. Um, I think with central registration, communication is vital. And I think we've made some improvements here. Um, the online application, um, is a great advancement. And I've heard feedback from, from parents about that, how that is an improvement. I've even heard very recently compliments about central registration and the communication that they've received from staff, from the CR office, um, to address some concerns that they had. We're not perfect. We still have some room to, to improve, but that's why we, we have this on the agenda to have that discussion. Um, the other thing I just want to note too, is that we heard, um, from several parents concerned about our pre-K and kindergarten cutoff date being December 31st. And I'm glad that we are transitioning to a December 1st cutoff for this current application cycle. Um, and that aligns now with all other area school districts for that December 1st cutoff. And just so folks know, the, the public knows, it is actually New York State law right now, um, that we can't have the cutoff earlier than December 1st. Uh, New York State requires that it be December 1st. Um, so with those remarks said, I will turn it over to Dr. Tanja Williams, um, to make introductions and any remarks that she has.
Thank you so much, Chairman Scott. Um, you know, you're absolutely right about central registration. It's complex. The work that happens over there is very, very complex. But I believe that under the leadership of Dr. Brown and the leadership of Director Daniels and Assistant Superintendent Holsher, that things are definitely moving in the right direction. We have our five by 2025. And the work at central registration really touches on every single one of those goals, increasing opportunities for our children. You know, as you shared, we listened and we heard about that December 31st cutoff date and we swiftly addressed, uh, that. And so we listened and we heard. Um, it's about ensuring that our children and parents are comfortable and have access to excellent education. We have our school choice program. We do safety and welfare transfers. You know, that's a department that works directly with the public. So cultivating trust is, is huge. So we touch on just about all of the five by 2025, uh, goals that are in our strategic plan. I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Brown to walk us through her presentation. And I, I think again, you will see that we are truly taking things to a new level.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. And good evening, board members, Dr. Williams, colleagues and listening audi- audience. So I'm really pleased to share a brief, yet comprehensive overview of the services offered at Central Registration, located at 33 Ast Street, but specifically focusing on student placement and registration, which falls under the Division of Student Support Services. Next slide, please. And as Dr. Williams just stated, we always, uh, begin all of our work is at the forefront of our minds, five by 2025. And we always engage the parents and caregivers as they engage in the application process. We believe, as Dr. Williams said, all five goals certainly relate to what we do at Central, uh, Registration. But certainly, uh, goals one and two, and that only begins with the preparation that we see that occurs at home, but also prior to entering school. But it also is about the meaningful collaboration between parents and caregivers. Districts, the district and the school staff, um, as they engage with parents and caregivers, they guide them through the application process, so that they may make an informed decision regarding their child's education. They can ultimately eliminate achievement and opportunity gaps to gain access to educational excellence. Next slide, please. So I'll just read this quickly. So the purpose of central registration, as we know, is to afford all parents and caregivers. We want to give all parents and caregivers that opportunity to have their children registered and enrolled in school. Buffalo Public School District, we have, we are school of choice. We have 42 elementary schools, 18 high schools that offer families a wide variety of educational and innovative programs designed to meet the academic interests and needs of students, including the option to apply to a career technical education, general education, or specialized program. So the following, um, are supports and services offered at Central, Central Registration. So we engage with four, um, distinct offices. So I will just begin briefly with student placement and registration, which is Dr. Williams just stated, that it is led by Director Kelly Daniels, with the support of Assistant Superintendent Tina Jones. Ms. Daniels and her very small staff, they process thousands of applications. They continue to register new students on an ongoing basis, um, while gearing up to place students, um, for the 2324 school year. Um, Chairman Scott, you said it earlier that there are tons of moving pieces and parts, um, for central registration. They're currently in one year, which is we're in 22, 23 school year. We're constantly getting new students in as they're preparing for the 2324 school year, as well as conducting transfers, um, for various reasons. And it's just truly amazing what they accomplish. And they do a phenomenal job engaging the families with the application process, collaborating with principals, school counselors, various departments and organizations. And we meet with the associates of school leadership twice a month to monitor the choice application process. Also, we have McKinney Vento, which is also under, uh, the Division of Student Support Services, under the direct leadership of Director Andrea Sanders, Assistant Superintendent Ornis Hill. And, uh, she also has a small staff. And so the McKinney Vento students, we, they conduct intakes. They make sure that students who do, who do not have permanent housing, um, receive immediate assistance with getting registered in school. They also, um, receive immediate transportation, their, uh, basic essentials to be successful in school. We make sure that they have their school supplies, uh, uniforms, if it applies. And also just to give a, a shout out to the McKinney Vento team and just to thank everyone who donated, uh, the toy drive donation. And we've extended that to this Friday. So thank you so much for those of you who donated. We know that we can provide them what we're, what we're allowed to through the grants. But we also know during this time and during this season, it's just so special for a student to be able to have a, a gift and a toy during this time. So we want to say thank you for that. Um, also, under the leadership of Chief Anne Botticelli's division, we work collaboratively with her awesome team comprised of the Special Education Department, led by Assistant Superintendent Kim Holsher, and multilingual department under the leadership of Directors Jenna Colerick and Janet Carrera-Longo. The Special Education Department, they really ensure that the correct placements of students with IEPs. And it's really important that Ms. Daniels and those two departments, they work hand in hand. And it's, it's very, um, it's, it's great that they're all in the same building and that is our welcoming center. The multilingual department, they ensure that students are assessed through the language assessment center and supported by cultural resource specialists. As you can see, the welcoming center of central registration, um, as I said before, that is comprised of four offices that consistently collaborate to meet the needs of all parents. Okay. Next slide, please. So the on-time application, it closed on Friday. We extended it due to the snow days. And the timeline to get the result letters, we are aiming for early spring 2023 and we are right on schedule. So we're really excited about that. Also, um, in terms of preparing for the application process, we meet, we met as a team with the principals of the criteria schools. And we really discussed that we really want to get all of our schools, um, to showcase early this year. We want to make sure that we're, you know, presenting our information early as the charter schools are, the private schools are. And we were so excited this year. This was our first time having, uh, the showcase in person since the pandemic. It was a phenomenal success. It was over 800, uh, individuals who were there. All of the BPS high schools were represented. We saw the principals, assistant principals, and really what touched our hearts is to see our students. Our students were there and they were advocating and sharing their experiences, um, at the school level. So that was a huge, um, a huge success. Uh, the elementary application, it was available online. And now there are paper applications for new students. And as, um, Chairman Scott stated, And as Chairman Scott stated, about the age entrance, student placement and registration also called all students who were impact, all parents who were impacted by their age entrance. So that is all taken care of because we know we're going to be moving into a transition year next year. Also, the high school application, it is a paper application that's online right now. And also, if you could just, for the criteria based testing, if you could just admire, click that link. And so with our criteria based testing, we also extended it to Buffalo Prep because we want to ensure that we are reaching a very large pool of underrepresented students. And so if you just scroll down, admire to the bottom of the page, you will just see, and this was posted for a couple, for a few months. We made sure that we posted this on all of our social media outlets, robo calls. We asked schools to also present this information. And so all of the criteria schools here, they were involved in the testing. We can go back to the main page. Thank you, Admire. And so with the application, also with the criteria based testing, we extended it again to all fourth grade students. It was an opt out model, but we also included grade six and eight. So again, additional access. And as you saw on that form, we not only offered the the testing at the home schools, but we also offered it on Saturdays. And again, extended it to Buffalo Prep. For the application process, parents may choose up to five schools. During that process, the counselors, they met with the families, they met with the students. They understood that there is a one year commitment. And so we've always encouraged them. And during the showcase, it was a very nice presentation in the auditorium of Performing Arts where the team explained the entire process and that we really want families to choose schools that they want to attend. Because again, if they choose a school, they don't, they're, we don't want them to be in that predicament. And so there are some schools that have the lotteries, and the lotteries are selected randomly through a computerized system. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so you see here, we have our new students per category. So last year, we were at six thousand five hundred and forty students for the entire school year. This year, we're only, we're only in the fourth month, and we already have four thousand two hundred and fifty students. As you can see, student placement and registration is busy. So we're really happy that we have new students coming in. You can see the categories. You can see the grade levels. By this data, you see that our elementary or pre K elementary and then the high school, large numbers coming in. Next slide, please. So some of the challenges that we face with central registration. Well, certainly, every effort is made to accommodate a parent's first choice. But due to limited seats, it's very difficult and other factors to give the parent their primary choice. And also, some parents and caregivers are not registering prior to September, which may limit their choices. We really, really push and encourage that early registration is very, very helpful in terms of having a better chance on receiving your school choice if the students meet the criteria. And then not every school district across New York State, New York State or the county country services students with an I E P in the same manner. So that is something that Special Education, Kim Holsher, shared with us as sometimes a challenge, but we always work through that and they make sure that they are meeting with the families, reviewing I E Ps to make sure the student is placed appropriately. Next slide, please. So this is some additional data. We really want to be rich in our data to be able to make informed decisions. And so this is what we're seeing in terms of trends and highlights, and it's really just a snapshot. But we're seeing elementary schools with high application rates for the twenty one twenty two school year with sixty four, ninety nine, thirty two, fifty, and sixty seven. So again, we're pulling this aggregate data. But it leaves us to think about maybe just some hunches or, you know, we don't know exactly why we're seeing that. But it actually tells us that we need to engage with the community more to find out why and also to really be able to share that we have great things happening in all of our schools. Next slide, please. Okay, so schools with high application rates for fifth grade and twenty one twenty two, in response to your questions, Chairman Scott, one fifty six and one ninety five. School eighty one and ninety four were the higher applicant rates for fifth grade. And then schools with high application rates for ninth grade included one fifty six and one ninety five, one ninety two, two twelve, three oh five, two oh six, three oh two, and three fifty five. And once again, it definitely share, it definitely tells us that we need to find out more in terms of why those schools are selected and also again, to continue to share the great news happening in all of our schools. Next slide, please. Now, this is a good news slide. So there were one thousand one hundred and thirty two students from charter who applied for placement into Buffalo Public Schools last year, and approximately sixty percent registered in B P S. Dr. Williams, she shared at the beginning, that was one of her initiatives and goals to really get that, all of our students, and to just encourage more students to register in the district. And it looks like we're getting there. Sixty five percent selected the reason of parent choice. Thirty percent selected highest grade completed at charter schools. Four percent selected expulsion from charter school. And another point six seven selected suspension from charter school. And then less than one percent did not provide a reason. So now we're again, in just the fourth month of school this year, and we already have one thousand twenty nine students from charter schools who applied for placement into Buffalo Public Schools thus far. And approximately fifty nine percent have registered. So that is great news. It's telling us that we're getting the word out. We're getting the word out in terms of the great work that's happening in this district, in our, in our schools. Next slide, please. So this is just a quick snapshot. When we're speaking about the charter schools, we're able to to see where the students are coming from. So the top three schools are Charter for Applied Technology, Buffalo United, and South Buffalo Charter. So again, as we're gathering more data and digging deeper in this data, but this is definitely what we saw as far as trends. Next slide, please. And this is additional data for charters to B P S. So this is some of the demographics. So the charter to B P S students demographic, the total number of students we saw.
Like gauging how their day is going to be tomorrow, whether or not they have.
Excuse me. Could, could everybody mute, please?
Okay, so the total number last year was six hundred and sixty seven. And then just overall, fifteen percent had an active I E P, seven percent were identified as.
Can you just unmute yourself, please?
Dr. Brown, you're muted.
Oh, I apologize. I don't know how much, how long I was muted. A total was of six hundred and sixty seven students. Over fifteen percent had an active I P, I E P, seven percent were identified as limited English proficient. And over fifty percent of the students were black. And fifty one percent were male and forty nine percent were female. Okay, next slide, please. So the next slide is data for twenty two twenty three school year. So so far, as you saw last year, we were over, well over, a little over six hundred. Now we're at five hundred and ninety seven students. And just in the fourth month of school, and approximately eight percent have an I E P. Ten percent are identified as limited English proficiency. Fifty one percent of students are black, twenty one percent are Hispanic, and forty one, forty two percent of students are males, and fifty eight percent are female. Next slide, please. Now looking at, and just looking at our data for fifth grade students for the for twenty twenty three demographic data for students this year. We have ninety two students, fifth grade students at City Honors. And as you can see, seventy nine of those students came from the Buffalo Public School District, which is a wonderful thing. It shows us that we are preparing our students for schools, for criteria schools into Excel and Education. Eight of them came from a charter and five from a private school. And then you see the breakdown of male to female. Next slide, please. And then this is another interesting view. These, these are the demographic data for zip codes and for special services. So for the special services, sixty six students, special education, and five oh four, three oh fourteen, and and six not applicable. But these are the zip codes that the students came from. And as we can see, fourteen two one five is the highest. And so this tells us when we look at these data in terms of the other zip codes, where we may need to concentrate more efforts as far as outreach. Next slide, please. So again, you just see the data here with race and ethnicity. And so a large percentage, forty six are white, seventeen black, twenty Asian, and nine multiracial, which also tells us that we need to continue to do more efforts in terms of getting more black students. And so that is one of the reasons why we continue to do the outreach with testing all fourth graders, sixth graders, and eighth graders who are interested, as well as the outreach with Buffalo Prep. And then you see the ethnicity. Next slide, please. And then finally, just some next steps. So we're going to continue to prepare for the twenty three twenty four school year. Again, the application process closed on December ninth, and we're collecting data and getting ready for lotteries and rankings. And we also want to create focus groups to streamline the high school head process. Again, there are a lot of moving parts, and this is a very large district. And we want input from the community, from those within our school system. So we are planning on creating that to streamline that process. We also want to increase the communication with the community to ensure that they are aware of the great work that's occurring at our B P S schools. Again, we're seeing certain schools have a higher application rate to those schools, which they're wonderful schools. But we also want to make sure that we know and understand why some of the other schools were not selected, because we know there are great things going on there as well. And then we also want to create a playbook by the end of the year to memorialize practices in the department. Again, it's really important because so many things change and so many, so many things we learn each and every year. We're always trying to get better and just to memorialize these practices. If there's ever a turnover or a change, that the work that we've, that we've accomplished over the years is in a place where we can continue that on and just get better each and every year. We also want to create a committee of secondary principals with criterion programs in their schools to reevaluate admissions practices. So we, we definitely want to do that. Look at the C T E, look to see how we can get better at all the programs offered in the schools. And then finally, to continue to work with H R and staffing, I'm really, really excited to share that it looks like we're in the final stages and we're going to receive a school counselor that will be on site at central registration that will certainly help our families as they're coming in. We know that we have families and students that maybe traditional school, they weren't as successful in the past. So that school counselor can sit down and work with that family in support of the schools. And then finally, it just, it takes a team. We want to continue to collaborate. And we want to focus on the solutions. It's important to identify a problem, but really focus on the solution. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. I will turn it over to my board colleagues and we'll go in alphabetical order for any questions that you might have, starting with Board Member Sharon Belton Cotman.
Thank you for sharing today, Dr. Brown. Certainly, I am very much aware of the challenges that you have. I do need some clarity, though. I need some clarity because I'm looking at this from an equity lens, and I'm trying to understand why the date was changed from the, or it is not allowed, you're not allowing children whose birthdays are after December the first to register, particularly since we have several charter schools who are, we're competing against that do allow that. And so I'm trying to get some clarity here because when we talk about equity barriers, okay, I I need some clarity here why that was done. I understand it was done back in two nineteen because I remember that. And I'll tell you the truth, okay, it was done in a board package, I'm sure, because it never came before the board to have that conversation. And so to see that the date, you know, is, is, is whatever, should be December the first, and never to have had a full conversation at the board table about it back in nineteen is concerning, too. And so I want to know what's the justification, particularly since we are competing with schools, particularly charter schools that, whose whose dates is the thirty first. I mean, we're competing against them with Village, Tapestry, Reach, just to name a few. So I'm trying to figure out if you have a child that's in pre K and you want to bring him to Buffalo Public School, and his birthday, he's not currently with Buffalo Public Schools, and his birthday is December the second, they are not allowed to attend our school, but they can leave and go to one of the other charter schools and attend. So I can remember back in the day when the cutoff was in November, okay? Because I made it through being a November baby. Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out, you know, the mentality behind that. I need some clarity with that because I don't think thirty days in the development of a child is that significant. And I really want some clarity on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I know that this year, and I can't provide the historical background, but I do know that in order to address those concerns, that's why we are, we make the phone calls so that the students who were impacted by the previous age entrance, they would have an option. And then next year, the same thing, because we did not want to take away that opportunity for students who could get into, who, who would have been impacted because that would not be fair to them. So it was between both, both worlds so that no one would lose, if that helps for the.
Well, it's not really, Dr. It's not really your question because all you do at registration is implement the policies that the board puts in place. And if, if I remember right, when this went into play, no conversation was had. It was, we hired an organization to do our, overdo our policy. And the boards by law say that once a year, the policies are all supposed to be reviewed. And so it went through, I'm sure, it's a big package without any conversation. And I just want, and for. And I just want, for next year, that the board to have this conversation on this topic, because if we are talking about a thirty-day span, okay? And we are competing for children, okay? We gotta be as competitive as we can be. So I need some clarity on, and, and moving forward, we'll have to bring it back to the table. You don't have to do it in this session, because it is something that the board needs to discuss. But it sounds, for the parents that can afford to keep their kids home, it's a great idea, okay? If you're in that middle-class bracket, upper-middle-class, you can afford to have a daycare, you can afford to do other things. I'm concerned about the children who we already struggle with, who do not come to kindergarten with the thirty thousand words that they need, et cetera, et cetera. Yet, for me, at this point, it's an equity issue. I'll have to be honest about it.
So, so Mrs. Belton-Cotman, we can talk offline further about this, but this, what was happening is, is we had children who were turning five, I think I have the right age, in between December first and December thirty-first, that we were saying they had to start kindergarten. And many of those parents were saying, I don't want my child to start kindergarten yet. I want to wait till the next year. And what was happening, actually, I was hearing directly from some of those parents, they were then choosing to go to charters or go to privates, because we had a different date, and they then had the opportunity to wait and hold their child back and start later.
Okay, but we can't tell parents by law that they have to send their kid to school by, by age five. The law is age six, that they have to have them enrolled by school. So I don't know where the confusion is. So we'll talk about that at another time. But I think we need to have the conversation, because we're, we're competing for students. And if we can get them in the door, and we can keep them, I'm sure, we're gonna keep them, okay? But if we can't get them in the door, so we need to talk about that. And I think we have some time to play with that for next year. Maybe it'll come.
Ms. Cotman, this is Nate, and this year, we do have that time, because this year, parents will have the option, if their child turns five between December first and December thirty-first, to either move forward into kindergarten or stay back into pre-K. And, and maybe that is the solution moving forward for folks within that. But our policy and the state law is, is pretty consistent that it's a December first date, which we're trying to come into alignment with. But I, I just wanted to add that piece in there. You know, so this year, I do think we have the time, because this year, parents sort of have the option, one way or the other.
So you're saying the state cuts off the date? Because if that's the case, how is it that the charter schools are able to do it to the thirty-first?
Well, we'd have to study that a little bit more, because they, they, they would be out of alignment as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We'll bring it up in, in the future. Thank you for answering that.
Thank you, Mrs. Belton-Cotman. Next, we have Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown. Any questions?
Thank you, Board Member Scott. My birthday is December twenty-four, so I want to go to school, okay? So, yeah, that's a discussion we need to have. Thank you, Dr. Brown. That was such a robust, complicated presentation. And I think Buffalo has one of the best showcases, you know, high school showcases in this state. It's very professionally done every year, and it looks, you know, real transparent. And, you know, people are able to talk and ask questions about the various high schools. It's interesting, I think, when we talk about these charter school returnees. It looks like, you know, when you did the presentation, I think I saw five hundred and ninety-seven students who returned from charters to Buffalo Public Schools. And out of that number, did it look, am I right to say that they did this by choice, or were they expelled?
Yes, so the majority of them did it by choice, but there were some who were expelled or suspended. So the majority of them, by the data, I'm just trying to pull that one slide.
Okay, because this is so interesting, because we do get a number. I remember two years ago, we had seven hundred students that returned from charters, and it wasn't by choice. So.
Right. It was four percent that really wasn't by choice.
Okay, that's roughly two hundred and something. Okay, all right. So we, we take everybody, and that's.
We educate everyone, yes. No excuses. We, we don't make any excuses. We educate our children.
Yeah, so that's good. Okay, so thank you so much for that interesting presentation. But I, I'm telling, but I want to come to school with my birthday December twenty-four.
We'll get you to school.
All right, thank you, Dr. Evans-Brown. Next, Mr. Hurd, any questions?
Thank you, Lawrence. I appreciate this presentation with central registration, and thank you, Dr. Brown, for such an in-depth presentation with a lot of detail pertaining to the numbers and percentages that we have. And it really should bring a light to the, to the very stressful and strenuous work that this district does and central registration do. I know that Kelly Daniels worked very hard over there, and I've visited her many times and called. And I know that parents don't call board members and, and myself unless they have a problem. But that goes for all the thousands and thousands of things that they do, that, you know, that's correct by placing students in, in the school of their choices and where parents feel they're comfortable, you know, educating their children and all the mid, mid, you know, sessions, transfers that they deal with, you know, with our children. I would like to somehow get a better handle on our transfers, because we do receive, I believe, with seven hundred and fifty-eight last year, that, that was transferred here to Buffalo Public Schools from charter programs or other programs. And, and they transfer, you know, we don't get that detail of why they were transferred or what was going on with that child, or, or was it a disciplinary matter? Or was this a, a choice of the parent? So we don't get the information about that. So if any way, you know, we can work, and we talked about this before as a district, to find out, you know, how can we place a child better, you know, in a better situation, and not, you know, someone who maybe went through some complications in their life and, you know, and dealing with mental illness, or struggles, or gang violence, and things like that, and put them in a situation where they may not feel comfortable, or other children may not feel comfortable, or teachers. So we can really try to work on that a little bit, and see if we can find a way to somehow make that happen, so we can get a report of our children, find out where they, where they need help at, so we can address those needs. Well, I'd say, again, great presentation and the numbers. I'm going to take time to go over the numbers again, and thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Ms. McCosey.
You know, I'm going to echo, the presentation was very detailed. I did receive a couple of texts of, just literally right now, stating how much easier it's been. I have a couple of folks who had children that they're just now registering, and children that have already been in school, who they unfortunately had issues with previously. So to those two people, you're doing fantastic work. I just want to make sure that we reiterate, as, as another text came through, that the language access within, within the registration process, that's, it's getting better, but there were folks who still have to, you know, go and bring someone with them in order to translate. There was a family who had some issues and had to come back another day, because we didn't offer the translation for them. It's just the text messages I received now. But again, I did say, I did see that we're doing much better within that category as well, but that might be something to look into, is, you know, maybe keeping up with having translators either at the ready, or what is the alternative before folks come? Maybe it's something we put out in Saturday Academies, or, you know, if you're looking to register your child, this is exactly what you need to do. And then the groups that we know we work with, how many partners we have that are, you know, working with, you know, the multilingual groups that we work with. Maybe it's making sure that they're made aware of, you know, if you're going to come to central registration, this is what you need, everything you need down the line. I know it's on our website, I know we have that out there, but somehow, there's a bottleneck in the communication. And that's the only real thing that I've heard, as far as anything that's been a holdup as of recently. But, you know, putting it out there, putting out the zip codes, putting out, you know, the type, the different populations, all of that detail and all of that data really matters. So I'm very, I'm very happy with the presentation. And if we all, do we all have a copy of that? I haven't looked at my email today. But if we can have a copy of that, maybe we can share with other folks as well. That would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCosey. Dr. Rivera.
Mr. Scott, I'll echo my colleague's compliments on the presentation. This was, this was a really important one, and I really appreciated the in-depth information that you gave us. I have, I have two questions. And one, I want to check and make sure I'm reading this slide correctly. So when I look at new students per category, there's a drop in the numbers of total number of new students that, that have registered with Buffalo Public Schools. If I'm doing it right, I think it's about thirty-five percent.
Yeah, the new students is just up until today's day, like just.
Just until today.
Just the first four months, yeah.
Yeah. So can you walk us through a little bit why that's significant?
That's a very good question, and that's why we want to dig deeper with our next steps, to really gather a team together and really disaggregate it, to really try to find what some trends are. And then moving forward, I think someone mentioned trying to find out why are they leaving, where they're coming from. So that's the next step. It was, was a lot to pull the, the data together, but now let's find out why they're leaving.
That's helpful, thank you. And so I also, from what you're saying, though, it sounds like historically, we gain students as we go through the year. I know we do as charter school, as students move out of charter schools. And it's interesting to me that, you know, grade nine is a time where you start seeing more and more students coming through. And I think that's very significant in terms of the way in which, as you said, Buffalo Public Schools educate all students. And we don't set up those kinds of barriers, where then students hit it and then have to leave. So, sorry, that was a little soapbox statement, but I really, I think that's very clear in the data. So I just wanted to establish that, too, though, is that part of the reason why you see the difference between those two numbers is because we add students as the year goes along. And so the snapshot that you take now and the snapshot that you take at the end of the year are going to be significant. Are there plans, when you look at the data, to see how many of those students we retain as we add our students through the year, and that we hold onto them? I also think, I suspect we're going to see something very positive there. And I, I also just think that would be an interesting data point, and it might help point to some of the, some of what we're seeing at various points throughout the year and why.
Well, that's an excellent point, to see how many students we retain. So that would be another additive to our next steps.
Next steps, exactly. And then I just, I have one more next step, so one more forward-looking piece. One thing that parents of students and families and caregivers of students with special needs have talked about for a really long time are ways in which that we can work with our students with special needs and allow them to visit schools. So one of the things that happens with the way that the high school showcase works, which is great, I'm not criticizing it at all, but one of the things that happens is our students with, with special needs who are identified in special education or in classrooms identified, you know, from sixteen one one on down, fifteen one one on down. Those students often don't get a chance to look at what their options are, and also to see their classrooms and their buildings in advance. And as, as parents, certainly, I experienced this myself as a parent of a student with special needs. But also, what a lot of parents with special needs often say is that that's really critical for successful transition for our students with special needs. They need to be able to see where they're going. And also, one extra layer with that is that a lot of our students with special needs would really benefit from CTE programs that are modified to suit their needs. And, and even just CTE programs, period. And that might be something that I, well, no, I'm going to say, that's something I encourage you to look towards and work with as we move forward, because that, too, would be a really strong support tool and a really critical point of success for our students.
Absolutely, totally agree with you. And that was one of the areas for our next steps.
Excellent.
To pull together that, that committee with the principals to look just at what you just described. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to hearing more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. I have a few questions to close. One, Dr. Brown, to piggyback on Dr. Rivera's first question. Just for clarification, on those new students, we're referring to students that have transferred from another school or district mid-school year, but that's who you're counting as a new student, correct?
Right, so new students are, is anyone that we register from July one to present? So I really shouldn't say the fourth, fourth month into the school year. So some of them started coming in after July one. And so the previous year ran from July one through June thirtieth.
Okay, so, so would, it wouldn't include, for example, pre-K students that started the year who registered the last school year?
It wouldn't include, the last school year, those pre-K students would have been included in the twenty-one, twenty-two data under pre-K. But we do have students that may come in during the school year at that grade level.
My second question, I mentioned the online application and how that's a great improvement. What I've heard from several parents, especially, we know that this is an anxious process, or process that produces anxiety. Is there a way for us to work with IT to set something up for them to receive a confirmation email, that their application has been received, and they have that confirmation that the application has been successfully submitted and received? And I just, it just seems to make sense. Whenever we register for anything, a variety of things as, as adults, you typically get some sort of reply in response that it's been received. So wondering if we can look into that.
Yes, we actually have that for this year. And they, they are supposed to receive a confirmation email. We worked with IT to put that in place.
Okay, okay.
So if there is a parent that, well, not the process ended, but, you know, they could always call central registration to find out. But yes, they get a confirmation email.
Okay, I did not know that. And then my last question is, you know, parents want to know when they're going to be finding out about placements for next year. I noticed that, that wasn't in your presentation. Do we have any projection on when letters could potentially start hitting mailboxes? Or do we know when we could have like a projection? And to Ms. Belton-Cotman's point, this also is critical, because we have parents that apply elsewhere, and they potentially find out about a placement. They have to make a commitment, because they have a deadline with it, wherever that might be. And so the earlier we get our placements out, the more likely we are to have those students attend our Buffalo Public Schools. So any, any idea on timeline, on when parents could be informed?
So, I'm sorry if I didn't say it earlier in the slide, it's early spring twenty-twenty-three. So you're asking for a specific date. It's definitely early part spring.
Yeah, I, I remember, like, even last year, we were running late with everything. But at some point, we started to let parents know that by, you know, March, by April, letters should be heading for pre-K. letters should be heading for pre-K placements.
Yeah, when we say early spring, we're looking at March or April.
Okay. March or April.
If we can get, once we, yes. So it's a lot of moving parts and we're excited for the early spring. We're really, I'm excited, we're on schedule or even a little, a little ahead of schedule. So early spring is hard to say an exact date because again, we're working with an outside evaluator. It's, it, there's just so many pieces to it.
Okay. So safe to say then, March, latest April, letters will start hitting mailbox.
That's our goal. That's, that's our, that's our firm goal and we will put updates on the website. So will that help out? We'll put updates so they don't think that they missed something.
Okay.
That could work for all of us. That would be great.
And we did that last year and I thought that was very helpful. It, I heard from parents about it, you know, those periodic notifications of this is coming, this has happened, this is what's coming next. I think it's very helpful for parents to hear those those steps.
Okay, that's great to get that feedback. We'll definitely make sure we continue that this year.
All right. Dr. Brown, thank you for the great presentation, all the information that was shared. My board colleagues, oh my gosh. I forgot about.
Is that goodbye or a question?
I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. Ms. Woods, go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I am also impressed with the many hats that are in areas that are covered under the student support area. And the toy drive and the attention for the McKinney ventral is is impressive. I wrote down two numbers that you had, you mentioned, that on over a thousand children. Last year, I guess it was one thousand one thirty-two students from charter schools applied for placement into Buffalo Public Schools.
Yes.
That that I like. And this year it's a thousand, one thousand twenty-nine. So we are gaining people who are waking up to the good things Buffalo Public Schools has, the programs that they have, the the opportunities we have, and they are, we're gaining some suits.
Yes, and due to the leadership of Dr. Williams in this board, yes. Getting the word out.
Okay, but the numbers I I was presented when we planned our budget is that there is a drop of about three hundred students overall for K to twelve. So is that the the thousand dollar, thousand students in that number or, I mean?
So I met this today with our acting chief financial officer, Jim Barnes, and he had some concrete numbers today that he's gotten based on our beds data. Last year, as of bed's day, we had lost one thousand one hundred and nine students. This year, the number was fewer than seven hundred. We're going in the right direction. We don't want to lose any, but last year it was one thousand one hundred and nine. This year, I believe it was six hundred and eighty-three or something close to that. I don't have the exact number, but it was fewer than seven hundred. So we're losing fewer students.
Okay. Maintaining and 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 maintaining our student count, I know that's one of our priorities.
Yeah.
Re, getting our students to choose and and publicize the good things in Buffalo Public Schools, that's a priority. I am glad to hear that parents are receiving confirmation emails that that's very important. That's one of the big complaints that that I was getting. And other than parents not having to make decisions, that, you know, they've applied to other schools, private schools and whatever, and a lot of them do not want to go to leave Buffalo Public Schools, but if they can't get into the first two schools of choice, they they will make that that choice. So admissions, especially into city honors, is important to 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 a lot of parents. So my other question is, I saw your stats on city honors and it said seventeen percent African-American students. And that's after you put the students and the extra students in from just the Ketchum Awards and you've given the tests in all, all of our schools. Are there any other ideas on moving forward to increase, reduce the gap and 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 get get access to more minority students in the city honors? Because you know, that's that's a big hit I'm always getting, so help me out here.
Absolutely. So I shared the fifth grade data specifically for the incoming fifth graders for this year. So it was ninety-two students in that class for city honors. And so seventeen of them were were black students. So yes, we are continuously, continuously, again, trying to give more and more access and the Buffalo prep was was great to add that this year. And also, we're really pulling together to look at how we can, it's similar to what Dr. Rivera said, I believe, in terms of giving our students more opportunities to be able to shadow and be able to engage in in the curriculum and the activities and just to be able to experience the schools that they're applying to. And it's also about engaging the the parents and the families about what they can do at home as well to prepare. It really starts at birth. And when you're in the car, public transportation, just so many different things you can do with a with a young child. So those are, those are some of the things. And Dr. Williams, she engages us as a team to really think through, a very diverse team, to think through, how can we engage our families and prepare our students, incoming students and our current BPS students? One thing I'm really happy about when I see these data is that we're growing our own kids. So when we look at that chart, the majority of them came from BPS. So I think we're moving in the right direction. We just have to continue to work our plan and get the communication and work with our parents too as they're working with us. So those are my initial ideas. But when we pull these committees together and focus groups, I think we'll even get more answers.
Thank you.
Sure.
Larry.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Ms. Belton Cotman.
So, you know, I know this isn't on the agenda, but I just feel the need because it is under educational support. I want to give a shout out to Sharon Brown and her team, for the McKinney Vento team, the work that they're doing. Today, we had a great meeting. I was very pleased with the items that they are growing. One of the things, Madam Superintendent, that I sort of requested, and I'm bringing it up front in front of the board, is that based on the amount of money that was set aside last year through the art money and ESSER money, as well as our new grant that I really requested, and I just feel that it's only equitable that children other than our homeless population, other than those that are in a shelter, also receive some some token for the holiday. We know who they are, okay? And and I can't even imagine, you know, what it might be like, but every year we typically focus in on the shelters, but we, but not our other children. And I appreciate that, but I really would like to see if we could do something. I know it's short notice, but, you know, maybe during Kwanzaa or something, I don't know. But if we can do something for that, for the other children too that are part of that. And I'm not sure what that would look like. One of the conversations came up and I'm sure Sharon, I'm sure staff will share, because we had McLean, Mrs. McLean from HUD online, and she had some ideas on some ways that we can do that. But I just feel that, to be fair and equitable, particularly since it's the holiday season, that all of our children are blessed through the, our McKinney Vento group, okay? Thank you.
I agree. I agree. I think that's very compassionate. These are difficult times, you know, for a lot of our children and families who are going through a lot. And so I don't think it would be a huge stretch to request that maybe some of our school counselors and social workers and schools who know of children experiencing, you know, homelessness and just challenging times for us to make sure that we're able to do something for them. So we'll do that. We'll do that.
All right, Dr. Williams, any other last thoughts before we close up for the evening?
I I just want to say, first of all, you know, thank you, Dr. Brown. You took some complex information and you made it, you know, understandable and comprehensive for everyone and you were transparent about where we were. And I think our numbers are going in the right direction. We have been intentional, we've been deliberate, you know, in all that we're doing. And I think the secret sauce for Buffalo Public Schools is the diversity that we have amongst our students, our staff, as well as programs that we're able to offer. I mean, we're doing modified sports now, you know, we've got our Say Yes program, we've got MBK scholars, Big Sisters, Little Sisters. We've got SSTs in all of our schools. So if there are parents who are listening, I'm recruiting everywhere I go. And I know that our staff and board are too. But if there are parents who are listening, we have some great things happening in Buffalo Public Schools. Check us out.
And I will add to that, since you're you're throwing out advertise, almost like an advertisement. Our three-year-old pre-K, two, first two classrooms are starting in January with, I believe, five more starting next school year in September.
That's correct.
Thing that is unique and excellent for Buffalo Public Schools. Mr. Hurd, we're about to finish early. Go ahead.
Yeah, we finished in early. I I heard Sharon comment about reaching out to those children that need help. So if you can comprise a list, then we can definitely reach out to some of them this holiday season. So if you can just work out a list and definitely can make sure we can, we can make some efforts for this.
We will do that.
All right, Dr. Brown, thank you again for your great presentation and for your time. Board member Superintendent Williams, we are concluding for the evening. Have a great night.
Good job, Larry. You're almost, you're almost. Well, you did forty-six minutes. Yeah, forty-six minutes. So I beat you by a minute. Okay.
Thank you for telling Cindy for this.
Yes, thank you, new board member.